Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, meeting in Middletown City Council's order. Please stand and join me in a moment of meditation and the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gang, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori. Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Mulligan.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here. I want to entertain a motion to excuse Ms. Vettori, she's on vacation. So, move.
Second.
Ms. Gang, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Alright, I have no sense in comment cards this evening, so we can move right to our city manager reports. Mr. Atkins?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I've got two items for you tonight. We had an unexpected failure on one of our fire apparatus that I had alerted council to earlier. I had sent out some preliminary information, but did tell you that I would bring back Chief Lally. Let him go over an overview of our fire equipment and also why we need now two pumpers as part of our replacement to keep our fire department going the way it should. So I'll turn it over to Chief Lally and let him do his presentation.
Good evening, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We're here tonight to make a presentation on the purchase of two fire engines. And gonna give you information, to provide you with information on the need and the justification for the purchase of two fire engines as opposed to one. The Division of Fire has one fire engine that was scheduled to be purchased in 2018, but due to aging apparatus and some structural deficiency, a second engine must be purchased to ensure the minimum number of fire apparatus is available to provide adequate fire service protection for the city of Middletown. And I'll go over several reasons why this came to be. A large part of the problem is in the economic downturn that started in 2008 and up until 2014. Funds that we were used to putting into the depreciation budget for the purchase of apparatus, we were unable to do because of a lack of funds that affected not only the Division of Fire, but every department there was. One of the questions, I had sent out a report a couple of weeks ago that I think you received that kind of tried to explain to you where we were at today and try to explain the difference between a fire engine, a fire truck, and a quint. Because, believe it or not, there is a difference. And while most people don't realize that difference when you start purchasing $400,000 and $1 million pieces of equipment, I think, you know, it was important that we explained that to you. One of the questions that came back was a question on going over the fire department's operational profile. So I wanted to go over that real quick, just to give you an idea of where we're at in our operational profile. In 2014, once again, due to some bad economic times and cutbacks in public safety, the Division of Fire lost 15 positions and went down to 13 people on duty a day. So the command staff had to sit back and try to figure out, how are we going to cover the city of Middletown with a minimum of 13 people on duty a day? What we came up with was the first emergency first profile, where we put a fire engine and a medic unit in each fire of the four firehouses and three personnel, and they took the first emergency first. And while that worked, most of the time, we did run into some problems and some deficiencies that we felt we had to correct. So in 2016, we went to a, what we call a hybrid first emergency first response profile, where at two of the stations, we maintained the first emergency first concept. Fire Station 85 at Central on Brill and Fire Station 82 on Dixie Highway. Those two stations maintained the first emergency first concept, where they either took the fire truck or a medic unit on the call, depending on what came in first. At the other two stations, fire headquarters at Roosevelt and Wykoff and Station 81 here across from the post office, we went to a dedicated fire engine and a dedicated medic unit. And the reason for that is, one of the deficiencies we found is that we got ourselves in a situation, which you'll see here on one of the slides, where all the crews were out on a medic unit and we had no fire engine available. And so, once we were able to get into better economic times, we got the safer grant, we were able to get our staffing up to at least 16 individuals on duty a day. So that allowed us to go to a couple of dedicated engine companies that would be held in reserve to respond to fire calls for service, mainly structured fires. Although, if we do go down to 16, we have to take one of those two dedicated fire engines out of service to run as a combo company. Our staffing, today, we have 79 uniformed personnel. Seventy-two of those personnel are out in operations, meaning they work 24 on, 48 off. That is up from the 63 when we had the 15 personnel cutback in 2014 and forced us to go to the first emergency first concept. If you recall, we received the safer grant two years ago, which paid for 12 firefighter EMTs to be brought on and brought back to work, so we could beef our staffing up to get the dedicated engine company. And it really was a lot of work there between cooperations between the firefighters' union, city administration, and the fire administration to sit down and say, hey, how do we solve this problem? And that's, all three parties came together and made the agreement that we'd go to the firefighter EMT certification, which was a reduced pay scale, but we got trucks back into service. So there was some great cooperation there. What that does is, as I stated earlier, at headquarters and Station 1, we try to keep a dedicated engine in service. However, the crew at Headquarters Station, they also cross-staff the ladder truck on days we don't have enough personnel on duty. What happens is your normal vacation holidays, where guys take off, you know, get days coming to them that they take off, might get us down to, there's 24 guys on a platoon. So we have structured time off, so we try to get it not less than 17 or 18, so we keep those crews individually staffed. But then, the unplanned time off is what hurt us. For example, right now, we have seven firefighters' officers who are off on injury leave right now due to various shoulder surgeries, back injuries. And that's kind of anomaly. Generally, it's not uncommon for us to have one or two people off. We've just had a bad run of a winter here, where we had a lot of fires in January and February and resulted in some injuries to personnel. What I want to show you here is one thing that we have done, and I gotta give a lot of credit to the command staff, and particularly Deputy Chief Dominey, who's here tonight, and Lieutenant Verden and Apparatus Operator Timmy Scout. These guys have squeezed every penny that we can squeeze out of the apparatus that we have, as you'll see when we start showing you some of the apparatus. And one idea, when we went to that first emergency first situation, what we found is those trucks didn't chase the ambulances like they used to, and I'll say in the old days. And that was for man, it served its purpose and it was for manpower purposes. But when we went to the first emergency first and had three guys on a crew, we felt we could cut back sending a lot of fire engines out chasing. Now, as we started to get personnel back on trucks, we still tried to maintain that concept. And we used to go out, we used to have engine companies go out with medic units on about 15 different advanced life support calls for service. We backed that up now to just the six you see up here on the screen. We'll send an additional unit if we know there is CPR in progress, because we know it takes manpower to get that advanced life support resuscitation done successfully. Motor vehicle crashes, we'll send an engine company and a medic unit. Shooting, stabbings, unresponsive overdoses, we'll send an additional crew out to help them. And then anytime the medic unit, hey, we need help, we have a person who might weigh 450, 500 pounds, it takes help to get those persons loaded onto the cotton into the medic unit. And then anytime the shift commander deems that he needs additional personnel on the scene. So you can see up there, we've cut back tremendously on the amount of time we've sent, or the number of times we've sent engine companies chasing medic units, which has saved a lot of wear and tear on the vehicles. And that's one of the things we also seen, as I said earlier, came from the first emergency first concept. We saved a pretty good amount of money in maintenance costs because those units were out less on the streets. And you're gonna see that in some of the engine company, engine hours on the trucks here in just a few seconds. This just gives you an idea of what we send on a structure fire. We send three engine companies, one ladder truck, one medic unit, one command vehicle. That gets us a minimum of 15 firefighters on the scene of a structured fire. That does not meet NFPA minimum standards of 16 on a structured fire, and it doesn't even come close to meeting the standards on like an industrial fire or a commercial fire, but we have mutual aid to fall back on if we would need more personnel. So that's kind of just a little quick synopsis of our operational profile to date. Now, what I'd like to do is to show you what the situation is out there with our current apparatus that gives you an idea of what we have in the frontline force and then what we keep in reserve. This first picture up here is Fire Engine 82. It is a frontline unit. It's out at the station at Dixie Highway. It's 2009 Sutlin. It is in good condition. Its life expectancy is to about 2029. What we do is, we try to keep vehicles in their total amount of service and frontline and reserve apparatus, we gauge about 20 years. Or 10,000 hours frontline. So that gives us an idea, we can expect it to give us about 12 to 15 years of frontline use, and then it goes into reserve for about five years, to give us a total of 20 years. You can see down there, the hours, Engine 82 now has 6,189 hours on the engine. And frontline, the garage likes to get about 10,000, the municipal garage likes to get about 10,000 hours on the engine before we place it into reserve status. So you see Engine 2 there, has a little ways to go. The good thing about that too, is that is one of the engines, that is one of the houses where they do the first emergency first. So that engine is used a lot less than it would be if it was a frontline dedicated engine company. The next picture, Fire Engine 83, is at Headquarters Station at Roosevelt and Wykoff. It is a frontline unit. It's a 2006 Sutlin. It is in fair condition. It is scheduled to go into reserve status in 2019. The plan is, if we purchase these two engines, that's gonna become the first reserve engine that is used in the event that another engine is out of service for maintenance or repair. Its life expectancy, it should take us to about 2026. And you see, it's reached 9,140 of its 10,000 hours. The next engine is our last frontline engine we have there, and that's Fire Engine 85 at Central on Brill. It's a frontline unit, as I stated. It's a 2013 Sutlin, that is our newest engine that we have. Its life expectancy is to 2033, and I can guarantee you, I won't be around. I hope I'm not. I know I'm only 39 years old, but you can see there that its hours, 1,777 hours of its 10,000. Once again, that's, we may even get a little bit more use out of that because it's out at one of the stations. We do a combined first emergency first response, so it gets less use of the engine going out a lot. The next picture is our ladder truck, our 110-foot aerial ladder. This is a vehicle that we bought used. And this is one of those once-in-a-lifetime deals that they say luck is where opportunity meets preparation. Once again, I can't say enough about Deputy Chief Dominey and his crew and recs at the garage. These guys, we lost our 110-foot, 1989 or 1988, 110-foot ladder truck back in the early 2000s. And they looked and looked and looked to see what we needed to do to get another 110-foot ladder truck, because they cost well over $1 million. Well, where opportunity met luck is, we found Greentown Ship, Ohio, had this 110-foot aerial ladder, and they didn't need it anymore. And they only had about 4,792 hours on it. That's why I call it the Pete Rose truck, 4,792. I'll be appearing here all night.
You're waitresses, huh?
I couldn't wait to say that. But we fell into this truck, like I said, it only had 4,700 hours on it. They didn't need 110-foot aerial ladder. This is over a million-dollar truck, and we've got this thing for $360,000. So you know, that kinda tell you, these guys do just a magnificent job of squeezing every penny they can out of our fire vehicle purchase fund. Unfortunately, the position we're in now with the loss of Quint 81 and aging reserve engine 84 and 86, sometimes we might have to press this into service here in 2018 for frontline use. We may have to send an engine company out on a detail at AK Steel. It's not uncommon for us to have at least one engine down every week for either maintenance, repair. And so, while we wanna try to use that as little as possible to get the extended life out of it, we'll see. Now we get into our reserve fleet. This is Reserve Fire Engine 86. It's a 2003 American Le France brand fire truck. We just got this back out of service, or out of repair last week. It is now down at Station 81, taking the place of Quint 81. That is essentially the engine, the quint that is dead in the water on us. The problem with this truck is it's hard to repair, it's hard to fix. The company is out of business. It's in poor condition, it's hard to get parts. Its life expectancy, we're trying to get it through to 2023. It went into reserve status in 2013, but it's gonna have to be a frontline engine force for the rest of 2018 until we get at least one new engine in. And it takes about a year to get an engine, once we order it, it takes about a year to get it delivered. You can see, the maintenance cost on this is already up to $171,000. The longer we keep these older engines in service, even reserve, we're chasing, spending money fixing them. It has 10,910 hours. Reserve Engine 84, the next slide. This engine is in pretty bad shape. This is one of those cars your mom and dad gave you when you were 16 and you'd hit a bump and some of the paint would fall off. It's a 1997 Laverne, it is in poor condition. It was due for replacement in December of 2015, but once again, we had to squeeze more life out of it. The Laverne company is also out of business, and we have spent maintenance cost on this vehicle in excess of $238,000. This is going to be our primary reserve engine for the rest of 2018. And this is our problem child. This is Quint 81. In the report I gave you a couple of weeks ago, I explained to you what is meant by quint. And the quint concept, in theory and on paper, seemed really good, really good idea. It took a vehicle and it was a combination of a ladder truck and an engine that could attack the fire, rolled into one, which was supposed to reduce staff, be able to reduce staff and reduce excessive cost of new engines and/or new trucks. The problem is, you use these quints day in and day out, they don't hold up like a regular fire engine does. Also, with its added weight, it has to have a design, a frame design of what we call a double frame structure. And that's where the problem has come in. If you wanna show the next slide. What you have here is a double frame constructed, structural here where it essentially holds a lot of weight. The problem is, you get a lot of corrosion and rust and structural damage between the C channels, where if you see where the red arrows are in between where the two frames are brought together. Show the next picture and then you'll see the damage. What happens is, rust corrosion causes gaps between those channels. And actually, where you see those red arrows, those arrows should be pushed together. So that's how much space there is now between those two structural frames. What that means is, we can't use the truck, it's too dangerous. It won't hold the weight of the ladder, and it stands a chance of collapsing. So that's the situation. I think, there might be another picture? Is that the second picture? That pretty much shows the same thing. Go on to the next picture. What really, where does this cause another great concern? And that's in our ISO rating, our insurance ratings. When ISO, the insurance service organization, comes into town and does some ratings for fire service coverage, we have a list of check-offs that we have to do to assure that we meet certain standards so that we maintain a rating that keeps our insurance to residential, commercial, industrial facilities reasonable. Ours is now a three. We are kinda pushing it here with the amount of engines we have available to us and that we have covering the city. So this kinda gives you an idea of the coverage we should have now. There is a little bit of the cross-staffing of Engine 82 and Engine 85. Some parts of the ISO say that that engine has to be staffed, but you can say, well, it is, and they could say, well, not when it's out on a medic unit. So right now, we're a three. We are pushing the limit by not having the availability to have an adequate number of engines to cover the city, not only in frontline, but in reserve status to cover on days when those engine companies may be out getting maintenance and/or repair, either it be for structural or engine purposes. Next picture just kinda gives you an idea. The top picture there is kinda what happens when you don't have engines available. That's when we're in the first emergency first concept. Everybody was out on medic runs. We've got medic units there, guys standing out front, waiting for either a mutual aid engine company to arrive or one of the other crews to clear up, to go back to the station, grab an engine company and get it there. Bottom picture, of course, is when you got the apparatus to do the job, the important thing you don't see there is fire. That's a good thing. So that is a quick synopsis of the situation we're in. If you have any other questions that I didn't answer in the report a couple of weeks ago or this evening, if I can't answer the question, I've got some guys here who deal with other vehicles on a day basis and work very closely with recs who are at the garage, and we could answer any questions you might.
Any questions for the chief this evening?
What happens to the units that are gonna be going away? Do we sell them? Do they get scrapped?
We may put them up on govdeals.com for sale, and that's a very good question. And it's something, if you go back and we look at Quint 81 there, Quint that...
It's out of service.
...causing us problems there. The cost to repair that, if we were to send that away to get repaired, just to start, just for them to take the body off, is $150,000 just to repair it. The best offer we've gotten so far for it is $5,000. And that was offered to us by the Sutlin company, and we said, well, we're gonna try our luck out on govdeals.com. There may be a department out there that only has $150,000, $200,000 out there and will maybe try to get it repaired, I don't know. But generally speaking, when an engine reaches its life, we put it on govdeals.com. Sometimes the manufacturer takes it back and parts it out. Or we've even taken this down to, has it been taken to Coen's yet?
Yeah. Coen's doesn't scrap it anymore, and they got a whole big sprapper.
So there you go. So that's the problem. And that's, you know, that almost makes you cry, because that's, you know, that's a nice truck when we got it, but once again, just due to the inherent, and I don't wanna say it's a design flaw, it is what it is, but you may also ask, well, what are they doing now? Because now all of our engines are coming in with that double steel frame. And one thing they've gone to is this third coating here, they're putting an additional coating on that steel frame to see if that doesn't alleviate some of this problem. These guys have done a tremendous amount of research on getting equipment that we take underneath the apparatuses and do a better job of cleaning them. They went and visited Rumkey a couple of weeks ago down in Cool Rain Township to see what they do for a lot of their garbage trucks and got some ideas from them. So as you can see, you know, we're trying to do everything we can to maximize the life expectancy of these trucks, but it's a little...
Can they powder coat those frames? I know powder coating, can they powder coat?
Well, that's kind of what they're going to. And then generally, they do put a coating on, but it just doesn't hold up to the corrosion.
You know, you're talking about the expense to reframe it, and this type of thing is very high. And I'm looking at your Reserve Engine 84, the '97 version, that's already run up about $240,000 in repair cost. What type of things do they, does that have to be repaired? I mean, tires, oil changes, things like that, don't run up to $200,000?
A whole slew of things, and the diesel engine might go wrong with it, transmission, just a whole, any part, door knobs, door latches.
Anything on the vehicle?
Anything on the vehicle, cooling systems, heating systems.
Don't diesel, I mean, I thought diesel engines were the way to go as far as longevity and strength of engines, rather than a combustion... and strength of engines, but rather than a combustion engine, diesel is the best way to go.
They are and the ability to pull that size of diesel fuel.
Okay. So these are the same engines that you'll find in a diesel truck, I'm assuming, down the highway?
Yes.
Because they, I mean, mileage wise, I mean, what kind of mileage wise are we getting out of these vehicles? I say, you see hours and that hours in use, is that hours the minute it leaves the fire station to the minute it comes back to the fire station or what?
Anytime the truck is turned on.
It records engine hours.
Okay.
And I, that's one question I'd ask Rex and, 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 because I thought which, which is more important and to them, the engine hours is, is, is what's, what they gauge it by more importantly. And two, the higher the engine hours and it's most likely that you'll, you'll have, you'll have more miles on them with the exception of that, that what we're seeing now with the first emergency first engines, they'll probably start to last long, have lower maintenance costs because they're not out as often.
Any other questions or?
Chief, thanks for the update. Uh, just one two-part question. As far as twenty seventeen, the number of structure fires and then for eighteen, is there a projection for number of structure fires?
I, I, I don't really have a, a projection because it's, it's so cyclical. We had like two hundred and twelve structure fire responses in two, two thousand and seventeen. We had a very busy January and February. March wasn't so busy. We had a couple of major fires in January and, and February. It, it, it's cyclical. I, I'd say, you know, about two hundred structure fire responses is pretty average for us. So we do make, make the structure fire calls for service.
Okay. Anything else for chief?
All right. Thank you, chief. Appreciate the, uh, update and information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, your honor, the second thing is we have had a slew of downtown requests for funding in the last couple of weeks. And I wanted to kind of go over what those requests were, give you a little background and what we already have in the budget and try to get some input from council on where they would like us to go from there. Go ahead, please. We have in the last couple of weeks gotten a request, I think you saw the petition that came in, uh, to start working on traffic calming, uh, in the downtown area. We've had a request from DMI and from the Bash people, uh, for ten to fifteen new trashcans. They're about three to five hundred dollars apiece, uh, to be consistent with our new downtown master plan. Uh, we've been asked to provide new tables for some of the downtown concerts. We haven't priced those out, but there are going to be a few thousand bucks if, uh, to, to fit what they would like us to do. We've had a request for expanded public restrooms that flush and have hand washing because we're getting a lot of complaints from the downtown businesses that people are not buying anything, they're just coming in to use the bathrooms so they can wash their hand and then go buy food at the Bash at one of the vendors, but they want to wash their hands. Um, the, the cost for that, that we've gotten some preliminary, uh, bids in are somewhere around seven to eight thousand dollars, uh, just for, to have these flushing and hand washing trashcans, or trashcans, uh, public restrooms brought in and, and then carried back out from like Rumpke, those types of places that do have those available. Uh, and then we've had, we've been talking to DMI for a couple of months now about the DORA options. There's been discussion about expanding the hours, uh, whether or not they want to use the DORA cup. Uh, again, if we're going to add ten to fifteen new trashcans, who's going to empty them? You know, and those have all been, hey, city, we really would like you to do this, will you write us a check and take care of this for us? Um, we've had no offers of partnership with DMI or from any of the downtown people and I'm not complaining about that, but that's where we're at. This is a straight out, hey, will you buy us stuff, uh, and supply these things either for events or for downtown, for things. So as this all literally came in in the last couple of weeks, uh, I said, okay, how are we going to handle this? Uh, because everybody's looking for an answer right now. We're getting close to Broad Street Bash, we're getting close to going all these, uh, events downtown. How are we going to handle this? So, go ahead, please. Wanted to remind everybody and Joe, I know you weren't here and Amy was not on council at the time, but I had asked council as we were getting ready to prepare the twenty eighteen budget, give me some idea, uh, how you want to set the budget up for discretionary dollars that we have. And at that time, uh, council had said, you know, paving, economic development, public safety and housing were kind of our, our hot buttons. Uh, downtown plan was a medium priority. Quality of life for the events and things like that were kind of a medium low priority. Uh, you can see the, the breakdown of the five council members, uh, and this is kind of what we used to set up the twenty eighteen budget. And so, go ahead, please. We have, uh, in the twenty eighteen budget, we are looking at, uh, there's some community foundation money that we are looking to get, uh, freed up that would allow us to spend fifty thousand on designing the bike path from the new River Center that's being constructed down to downtown. We've got to do some work with the community foundation. It's not exactly what that money was purpose for, but it's been sitting there for several years and they've indicated that they're willing to look at, uh, repurposing that money in a slightly different way that would allow us to work on the bike path. We've got seventy-five in the facade grant program that will just about use up the U-DAG funds. That's an old nineteen eighties HUD program that's been used for twenty, twenty-five years, uh, to fund these types of programs. Uh, DMI has twenty-five thousand in funding. Uh, we have given various support. I know that I just paid for the license for the movies in the park, the, the license to show the movies, just little stuff here and there. We're, we're providing some food, we're providing some PR, we're doing some advertising, uh, paying some license fees, things like that. We've got about five grand just in events. Um, and we're still working with Duke to try to get the LED project off of the ground for our streetlights. Uh, I should have an update in the next month or so on where that's going to go. But the talk was as part of this converting all the streetlights in the city, uh, to LED that we had talked about incorporating, uh, new streetlights downtown. There's about two hundred streetlights downtown and if you go in the area that we've laid out as the entertainment district, uh, they're about two to three thousand dollars apiece for new, uh, light poles. So you're looking five to seven hundred thousand theoretically in twenty eighteen if that project gets off the ground and comes together. This is kind of, again, where we started with twenty eighteen. This is a budget that you'd already passed. It doesn't include any of the things that we've been requested to do. So we wanted to take a look and show you what other communities are doing. Go ahead, please. This is, uh, and I'll give credit to the Montrez Group, uh, one of the contractors and vendors that we do business with. This is a slide I, I just completely stole from them, but it's how most communities in the area are using, uh, money to finance downtown redevelopment. A lot of these you've seen and heard before, we're going to talk about a few of them, but transit, using transit to bring people downtown, local tax credits, special improvement district, incentives from the state, TIF financing, opportunity zones, uh, downtown redevelopment districts, uh, historic, uh, historic preservation tax credits, new market tax credits. Uh, if you haven't been familiar with all these, you're at least probably have heard a lot of these before. What's not on that fund and what most communities in Ohio are not doing is writing a check out of the general fund. They're finding other ways to use tax incentive and other ways to pay for these types of improvements. So we can always write a check out of the general fund. That's not how most communities are doing it in Ohio, would not be our recommendation. Go ahead, please. We already have a TIF in place in the downtown area. It's the area in purple on the map there. Uh, as you can see, with the work we've done so far, although we've opened forty new businesses, we've not seen a huge increase yet in the property values in those areas. That TIF is basically breaking even. It's bringing in last year for the, well, for twenty eighteen, it's budgeted to bring in about ten thousand five. We have a debt service of ten grand. The answer is it's basically breaking even. It's not really generating anything that would allow us to pay for extra, uh, events and things downtown. Go ahead, please. Downtown redevelopment districts, we're working on right now to look at how we might use those. They promote the rehab of historic buildings. Similar to TIF districts, we can divert increases in property tax revenue to improve certain benefits benefiting the district. Uh, they can be, they use to make loans or grants to owners of historic buildings. Uh, they can also do nonhistoric buildings within the district, public infrastructure improvements against another tool that's being used throughout Ohio. We're doing some research on it right now if we get a little better idea of where we would use those. There's some specific rules, so many acres, so many types of historic buildings in the area that have to be in it. Uh, we will probably be bringing that to you in the next month or two with some little more detail of how it might be applied in Middletown. Go ahead, please. Special improvements district, Hamilton's had this in place since nineteen ninety-six. They're downtown, uh, it's an area where the owners of the businesses actually are assessed for the improvements that are made in the area. Has to be, uh, requested of us. Uh, they become members of the nonprofit corporation. Go ahead. A board of directors of the members then directs the activities because they're the ones paying the assessment. They can range from lighting, signage, parking lots, holiday lighting, landscaping, trash and snow removal, the exact type of things that we're continually being asked to do downtown. It's another way that a lot of communities are doing. Again, Hamilton's had this in place for twenty years, uh, and they use it very well. Go ahead, please. Uh, opportunity zones is another area we've been looking at. Uh, we submitted, I think, four different areas for opportunity zones. Uh, one of ours was picked up by the state. It's out at the airport, which means we can't use opportunity zones in the downtown area. We will, again, as, as we develop the opportunity zones, uh, bring airport opportunities to you and how that might be used, but it's not going to be something we can use for downtown. Go ahead, please. And then the traffic calming. Uh, we've talked about this a couple of times. We're in the process of, uh, updating our master plan. We've got the committee up and running. We've already done a lot of work in community visioning, the downtown master plan. We're working on the airport and housing in twenty eighteen. We've adopted the new zoning code and development code in February. As we get the, the master plan well underway and we know where housing's heading, where the airport's heading, what, how we're going to implement the downtown master plan, the very last piece is, once you know what you're doing in the city, how do you use transit? How do you use auto, bicycle, pedestrian to move people better to effectuate the, the master plan strategies? And so we've got seventy-five thousand dollars in this year's budget for, uh, a transportation study. My guess is that we're going to have another allocation in nineteen to finish it. This is going to be a comprehensive redevelopment. Go ahead, please. Will likely contain major changes in how we move people in the city. Uh, it would probably include bike paths, walkable streets, changing traffic patterns to get people downtown, new traffic lights and things that will move people better ways. Uh, and my intention is to completely reimagine transit and start over. Uh, right now it, we have several buses that drive in circles and connect with each other and it's just run that way for, I don't know how long, twenty, thirty years. Uh, we have a, an asset that other communities don't have. We have public transportation. Uh, we want to use it to start moving people from downtown to the highway better, to get our millennials up and running and moving who don't want to own cars. But more importantly, we want to get people to first and second shift jobs at our manufacturers. And that's something we've not used transit for in the past. That's going to, workforce development is going to be the main focus of our transit as we move forward into the future. We do have, back up again, uh, seventy-five thousand. Uh, and again, we will start that in the fourth quarter of this year. We don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves or we'll either end up changing things or we'll do an inefficient thing if we do it in too many pieces that don't work together. We want to try to do that as one master plan for transportation. Go ahead, please. Last one's DORA. We've been talking with DMI. In the downtown businesses, um, we were the first DORA in the state of Ohio. That had some advantages, it also had some disadvantages. Uh, we kind of blazed the trail. Some other communities have come up with some better ways to do DORA, uh, throughout Ohio. Uh, we've had some conflict between the DORA law and the way liquor control is, uh, interpreting the DORA. So when we have things like Broad Street Bash, DORA actually is supposed to be shut down. It's an odd way, it's an odd mixing of the laws between liquor control and the DORA law. So we have drafted up for DMI and for the downtown businesses, uh, the best way that we'll operate, uh, DORA during internal events, external events, and then mixed use events like wine women and chocolate where you're going in and out of businesses, getting alcohol, moving back out, different, and again, based on the type of liquor permit, how long it's going to be in operation. Uh, we have blended the DORA, talked to liquor control, sent our record, policy recommendations to both and they said, yes, we believe if you operate that way that nobody's going to have any problems with that. So the other thing is DORA operating hours. Every other DORA, uh, in the state of Ohio has much longer operating hours than we did. We started at very modest because we weren't sure what we were doing and, uh, frankly, everyone else has opened it up more, they've not had problems. There's been some recommendations that we go something and again, I'm, I'm going from memory, so we'll bring you the actual, uh, proposal when it comes. As I recall, we were talking from noon to midnight, seven days a week, as I recall. Uh, we are the only DORA in the state of Ohio that doesn't use the DORA cup. There's a standardized cup. The concept basically is a Chamber or a DMI type organization buys the cup at wholesale, they sell it to the bartenders at, let's say it's a twenty-five cent cup, they sell it to the bartenders for fifty cents or send it to the end user for a dollar. The idea is that bartender gets to make a little money off the cup. Whoever's running it, whether it's the DMI or it's a Chamber or event, they use that money and they start using that again, not only to buy the cups, but pay for extra trash removal, pay for cleanup, pay for snow removal, those types of things. We are the only DORA in the state of Ohio that doesn't do that. There's been a lot of resistance from a lot of our bar owners. Uh, I offered even to take some of them up to Canton or a couple, some of the other cities around and show them how it's, let them talk to other owners. And so far, they haven't taken me up on that. Uh, the last one that we were talking about is the geographic boundary of the district. We needed so many liquor permit holders to open up DORA when we did it. To do that, we brought in Forest Hills and made a fairly large area because that's what it took to get the, the minimum number of alcohol, uh, liquor permit holders. As we've gone forward, now that the wine show, the, the wine bars opened up, Liberty Spirits and a couple others have opened up, um, we are much larger than all other DORs in Ohio. And I think it's time to pull it back down and be a little more strategic about how we do it and then do a better job of promoting the smaller district, uh, bringing in Rolling Mill, Rolling Mill, Josh's, Newbury, um, those areas. And again, be a little smarter about how we do it. Right now, there's no consensus. We've had a couple of meetings with DMI, we've had a couple of meetings, uh, Major Burke's been out talking to some of the bar owners. We've got some resistance, uh, and so far, we have no consensus on that. But they want to expand it, but again, who's going to empty the trash? He's going to do these things that cost money and the answer is, well, we think the city should just pick that up. We, we want to make sure that we've thought that through. Go ahead, please. Again, we've got the traffic calming petition, uh, the ten to fifteen new trashcans, tables, public restrooms for the events, expanded DORA options and, go ahead, please. I, I kind of have three options available to me. I can tell them, no, that's not part of the budget, we're not going to do that. Um, I can bring you a supplemental appropriation and we can write a check and, and do these things. The things that are being asked for are consistent with the downtown master plan. They're consistent with the things we want to do. We want successful events downtown. We want successful Broad Street Bash. We want taking it to the streets to do well. These are not inconsistent with things we want to have happen, but these are not typically how other communities are paying for these things. The third option would be realizing that we, we need to have a longer term option. We could pay for some of these things now, get the trashcans, get the tables and continue to say, but long-term, we're going to have a special improvement district, a DRD. We're going to do something in the longer term as we implement these long-term, uh, downtown master plan options, uh, that will allow us to assess people and, and get our, our downtown merchants involved more. I've got, again, a lot of requests and I need some input from council as to the style of how they would like me to oppress, to process these requests.
Thank you. Any initial comments from, uh, council this evening?
Yes. Um, what would be wrong with using, uh, Visitors Bureau money to do that?
We can ask them. They are a board of council, but they are also independent. Uh, as we're going to talk about tonight about the, the Visitors Bureau, they're an odd animal as far as our boards and commissions are a little different. They're their own nonprofit. Uh, once you appoint the board, they have the right, if they're within their bylaws, to allocate where the money's going. We can ask them. Uh, like, they have a budget that they've been playing around with, it doesn't include that. Uh, the answer is we can ask them.
I had the same thought. Um, on the trashcans, who, would they be city trashcans or, so who empties the trash now? I assume city employees?
We do. And now we're adding more trash and we're adding more vents and bigger DORA hours, which means we're going to need to empty them more, which we're going to, it's going to cost us more money to do that.
Are all these requests coming from DMI or another group or is this a hodgepodge of-
It's a, it's a hodgepodge. We got, the petition comes from several downtown, uh, area people. The tables came from Broad Street Bash, the, uh, trashcans were from DMI, um, and Broad Street Bash and what was the other?
Restrooms were-
Restrooms were from Broad Street Bash. Uh, again, those are available, uh, but they are very expensive and they, and they bring them in, they set them up and they tear them down after each event. Again, these are not inconsistent things. And we've had a request, open up more public bathrooms downtown. Lock and do something on transportation. Problem we've had in the past is then we have, no one demand them, nobody restock them. And with, uh, the addiction problem we've had in this city, we have bad things happening in those, so we've locked them up and we don't keep them open right now. It's a, it's a real situation that- It's a real situation that we're in for the moment. I hope as, as the opiate problem receives, that we can get better about opening up our arc bathrooms more, but right now, it's a problem.
You know the initial thoughts?
No, I think it's important to, you know, start the conversation about a Cid or a DRD, as you brought up, and I agree that the Convention and Visitors Bureau would be a logical source of funding for some of these requests. But I think the city does have some responsibility, because we have incorporated the downtown master plan and we've authorized it. And if you just authorize a plan and just let it sit on the shelf, it doesn't do anybody any good. So I think we need to put some money towards these projects.
Yeah, I'm kind of landing somewhere in between. I think, I think you could say, have a hard time making a case that the city hasn't done a lot for the downtown, this council and last councils. I guess I would say, I would ask the groups to get together, prioritize what they want. We've already set the budget for this year. I would ask them to put some money in, and I would like the city to be the last dollar in, potentially in the next budget, and look at it as part of the 19 budget.
Yeah, I would see, land along with the same lines, too, to Mr. Mulligan's comments. I mean, this is a nice problem to have, to deal with.
Right, it's a good problem.
Rather than having a vacant downtown.
We have successful concerts downtown, we have people, we have too much trash, because people are coming down and, and using our businesses. So I mean, I.
Yeah. And I, I would encourage, as Mr. Moon mentioned, you know, can we do a partnership here? Because we do, I mean, the city does still get a portion of the, we split the tax revenues with the Visitors Bureau.
Correct.
And I don't know how your graph necessarily incorporated that, but that's kind of a special.
We could, yep, we could pull some money out of the city government fund.
Maybe there's, you know, a two-way, three-way partnership we could develop and say, okay, here's an allocation, you know, match it. They've got nonprofit status. I mean, it'd be nice to get some of these done right away. Again, I, maybe the restrooms, we just, you know, that might be a little short order. Maybe we try it once or twice and see what it is, but I don't know that doing them for every, all 10 concerts is feasible either. Because I would argue, we'd probably open up the transit ones probably for cheaper than $7,000 for, you know, 10 nights a year.
Yeah.
So, that might be something to look at for next year. And again, the DORA, expanding that, maybe we use this as a carrot and stick method to encourage, you know, participation. Here's, here's a way to get expanded, but we need your participation on these things, and we need to all agree on, okay, here's the format we're going to use if the cup works. I'd like to see one of these communities that's using the cup, because, you know, I think about some of the control issues of, you know, someone bringing a cup from last week and bringing in their own.
We actually have a biodegradable cup that in three days dissolves.
Oh, well, okay, well, maybe that dissolves it then. So, just as long as they don't get wet on the shelf, I guess, it's okay.
Right.
So, but yeah, maybe that's some stuff we look at, and we use that as a, kind of a trading negotiation strategy to get, get some of this done. But, you know, in the grand scheme of things, I don't know that, you know, if it's, you know, $20,000 in total spending here, the traffic calming, maybe that's a little bigger to run a striper, but.
I would recommend on the traffic calming that we incorporate that this fall when we go to the fourth quarter.
Yeah.
If we've got the rest of it. And I'd like to do that. And again, if you all tell me you want to do it faster, I will, but I think it's inefficient, and I think it's, it would be smarter and better and more efficient to do it in the fourth quarter, as we get the other pieces together and do one, one look at the whole thing for transportation.
Look, it's easy to ask the city for money. Everybody would come and ask the city for money.
Yeah, right.
And these businesses are realizing a real benefit revenue-wise from all these events. So I think it's only fair that we kind of start with them and, and take it from there and see what the top priorities are. And then perhaps there can be, like the mayor said, some sort of partnership, but I think they need to have some skin in the game as well.
Are we talking about CVB, or are we talking about the downtown businesses themselves? Because I just want to make sure I'm, when I go out and talk, that I may, may, that I correctly convey your.
I, I think I heard like all, all three. I mean, I think, again, the Visitors Bureau, I mean, that's, this again, is bringing visitors to downtown.
Yep.
It might be residents, it might be outsiders.
You would be interested, let me say it back to you then, you're looking for some DMI or downtown business support, you're also looking for some CVB support, and you're, and we might be the third wheel that finishes the last dollar in. Is that, do I hear that correctly?
I think that's right.
Yeah, I don't think that's hard to argue against on any side, I mean.
I don't know if it's the last dollar or the first dollar.
Yeah. It'd be nice to buy some new trash cans. I mean, I mean, trash cans are probably from 1976, I bet.
Probably.
So, probably fully depreciated like those fire trucks.
You know, the debris and everything we're talking about is all being caused by them buying things from the vendors, so the vendors are making money off of that, so why shouldn't they pay to have the receptacles and so forth, too?
Yeah, well, and then, but you also have the food truck issues and stuff like that for the Bash and things like that, that established merchants, you know, that's, that's one of the counterarguments that is challenging sometimes there, too, where people bringing in their own soda cans and stuff. But, yeah, I think we can come up with a good partnership.
That gives me enough to get at least to go start having some conversations.
And I'm sure we'll hear more after your presentation here, so that's been helpful. Thank you.
All right, that's all, Your Honor, thank you.
All right, thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
With consideration this evening, we have the approval of the City Council minutes from March the 6th and March the 20th, 2018. To receive and file board and commission minutes from the Middletown Visitors Bureau of August the 9th, August 30th, October 17th, November 1st, November 15th, December 21st, 2017, and January 10th and February 19th, 2018. Board of Health minutes from February 13th, 2018. To receive and file OHS of office for Cody Adams, Zachary Barnhart, Ethan Cox, Andreas Eddy, Colton Elliott, Cody Fraser, Patrick Glassburn, Nancy McKillop, Michael Preston, Sarah Sargent, and David Vasquez. To authorize the city manager to enter into a personal, I'm sorry, professional services agreement, I'm going to start again. To authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with CH2M to perform construction management services for the Kensington Pump Station upgrade project.
Okay, do we have motion to approve all the issues and actions listed on the consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
We'll have one motion out of this evening.
To authorize the purchase of two fire pumpers for the Division of Fire from the Setfin Corporation of Dublin, Ohio, in an amount of $937,050 for both units, with no action requested until April 17th, 2018.
Want to make sure this gave you two weeks. Again, if you have any additional questions or anything that you'd like to resolve, anytime we're spending a million bucks, it's worth taking our time. I will remind you, though, that it's a 330-day lead time, and so, you've seen the condition of our equipment, and Chief Lolly's right, and we went, and we did what we had to. We were down to, you know, for those of you that were around during the recession, we were down to not buying equipment, and not buying everything to keep leasing fires as long as we can, and eventually, we had to cut leasing fires down. And so, this is, this is kind of a legacy of, a part of this is a legacy of the recession still coming back, where we didn't invest in our equipment the way we should have or wanted to. And so, again, we would like to put in the order for both pumpers, if you guys are okay with it, and we'll ask you again in two weeks. Again, if you have any questions at all, Chief Lolly and his staff would be happy to get you any additional information you need to make a decision.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, and that brings us to council comments. Start with Mr. Mulligan this evening.
No comments, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, and number one, I'd like to thank Chief Lolly and the officers for coming in and putting on their presentation. Secondly, I would like to thank the organizers and the volunteers that put on the Easter egg hunts at Sherman Park and Douglas Park this weekend, so it was a great turnout. And thank them again.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Moon?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. I just had a couple things to mention. I want to express, you know, we've got some excitement going on downtown now with First Friday coming again, and I'll express my appreciation to those that are leading that charge. It's good to see things happening. These, well, there are little, little problems, there are problems, but they're good problems to have, so appreciate their encouragement and excitement about it. So we've, you know, been a long, long way coming, and a lot of people are excited about the opportunities happening downtown. I know we hear some challenges on occasion, but I think we're making some good progress, so feel good about that. And with that, we can move to our legislation this evening. Ms. Fox?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. There are six items of legislation on tonight's agenda, three of which are emergencies. Therefore, we will need a motion to waive the charter provision requiring two separate readings as to the following. First is ordinance number O-2018-7. The second is ordinance number O-2018-8. And lastly, is ordinance number O-2018-9.
I move that the charter provision requiring readings on two separate days be suspended, and the ordinances and resolutions previously discussed be declared an emergency measure and read one time only.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
First up this evening is resolution number R-2018-7. This is a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio for the period ending December 31st, 2018. This is in regards to the general fund and is a second reading and is ready for action this evening.
Okay, do we have motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Ordinance number O-2018-7. This is an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with How Contractors Incorporated. This is for the repair of the East Middletown Interceptor Sewer and is declaring an emergency.
Do we have motion to adopt? Still moved?
Second.
Mr. Atkins?
Your Honor, there was a presentation at the last meeting. This was an emergency repair of a sewer collapsed on January 29th. We have already had the repairs done, and this is the emergency request to pay them a further time and materials.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ordinance number O-2018-8. This is an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with OBR Cooling Towers Incorporated. This is for the repair of cooling towers of the city building and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Atkins, anything else to add?
No, Your Honor, there was a presentation at the last meeting, and it's ready for your action this evening.
All right. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Next is ordinance number O-2018-9. This is an ordinance setting forth municipal services that will be provided to approximately 3.089 acres located in Fairfield Township, Warren County, Ohio, as required by section 709.023 of the Ohio Revised Code. This is in regards to the annexation and declaring an emergency.
And that was Franklin Township, right? I heard Fairfield.
Yes, I apologize.
Okay, I want to make sure, so they get nervous. Annex in Fairfield Township. Do we have motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Atkins?
Are we still letting this down?
We have received information from the attorney who was representing the party that was requesting the annexation. They had some issues with the mapping. It seems that they submitted the petition a little bit too early. They're actually going to, they can't amend it since they're doing it under a special procedure of annexation, and so they're actually going to have to pull the whole petition and resubmit it, but we still have pending litigation that has to be there voted on.
Okay.
Our recommendation is to vote it down, let them resubmit, and then we'll bring this back to you when they, if and when they bring it back with the correct information.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments from council?
We can't table it, obviously, because that would be no action, which would.
It'd be preference, it'd be cleaner to vote it down and start over.
I asked the same question earlier, but.
And when they resubmit, it will be a completely new petition also, so we would need new legislation for it.
So, anything else? Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
No.
Mr. Mulligan?
No.
Mayor Mulligan?
No.
Mr. Bohannon?
No.
Next is ordinance number O-2018-10. This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept a loan from Middletown Moving Forward. This is to build an extension road off of Hook Drive and will be declaring an emergency. No action is requested until April 17th, 2018.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, City Council, we're looking to accept a loan from Middletown Moving Forward, the amount of $260,000. As you're aware, we bought a lot off of Hook Drive, I believe it was last year, and we are in the process now of updating the airport layout plan and the airport master plan to allow us to open up that western side of the airport for development. This is a loan that will allow us to start building the road and extend utilities into that area. It will be paid back out of the general fund, storm fund, water fund, and sewer fund. We had bought that in 2016. We will utilize grant dollars provided by Duke Energy to Middletown Moving Forward. Those will expire at May 31st of this year, and so we are requesting emergency action at the April 17th to allow us to accept that loan and use those grant dollars before they expire.
So what happens to the, to the money if they don't meet the statutory guidelines?
They, they have problems. They are, they have utility statutory problems with not complying with their redevelopment requirements.
I see there's no prepayment penalty with the idea to be pay it back?
Correct.